Good afternoon and welcome to the Planning Board meeting on February 10th, 2025. At this time, I would like to now call the meeting to order. We'll begin with our introductions. We are fully remote on Zoom today. So our members, if you could introduce yourselves, we'll start with Sean.
Sean Baker, member.
Jim?
Jim Davis, member.
Maggie?
Maggie O'Phill, member.
And myself, Meredith Hall, serving as chair. For staff today, we have our Assistant Town Planner Cheyenne. If you'd like to introduce yourself. Oh, you're muted. Sorry.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, now we can hear you.
Cheyenne Fraser, Assistant Director of Planning.
Great, thank you. And is Julia with us? I didn't.
She might be a little late.
Okay, all right. We'll introduce her when she comes in. Perfect. So the reason why we are here today is just we have one agenda item. It's the discussion and continuation of the discussion for MBTA Action Plan. At this time, what I thought we would do, I know some people had sent letters in requesting some time to speak today, so I did want to allow for that. What I would like to do is allow up to 15 minutes, up to two minutes per person. Cheyenne's going to keep the timer. And we're going to limit the comments to people who have not sent in letters already. We have received your letters and we have read them. But I just wanted to allow for people who have not submitted letters to be able to comment during this comment period. So if you would like to put your hand up and you have not previously sent a comment to the Planning Board, you can do so now. And we'll look for hands raised. I'm not seeing any hands raised at this time. Okay. Cheyenne, are you seeing any? I don't think I do.
No, I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, all right. So at this time, I thought it might be helpful just to sort of give an overview of how we got here, where we are in the process with the MBTA Communities Act and moving forward with zoning. For those who may be watching who have not been following. Back in January, we did get a decision by the SJC, which ruled, as part of the legal lawsuit with the town, that it was determined by the SJC that the law is, that the MBTA Communities Act is lawful and that it is enforceable by the Attorney General. So that is a threshold that we were getting clarification on and we did understand. What the SJC also ruled on was that the guidelines, which we're now referring to as regulations, were not properly promulgated through the APA process. So now what that requires is that the Department of Housing, the HLC, go back and allow communities that were not compliant to have a comment period and allow for public comment to be sent to HLC. That comment period is still ongoing. That comment period on the regulations, the comment period will close on the 21st of February. So it's an ongoing for those in the community who would like to send comments to EO HLC. In the meantime, they also were providing emergency regulations. The emergency regulations that came down were quite similar to the original regulations that were not properly promulgated. But they did include a slight change in terms of mentioning specifically the Mattapan High Speed Line. The emergency regulations are in effect for 90 days. So what HLC is doing is the parallel path of what is required by the SJC, that the regulations go through the comment period. And so that period is still open, again, going through the 21st of February. Emergency regulations are good for up to 90 days. So the plan is that there eventually will be final regulations that will be properly promulgated. And that is what's ongoing right now. Also, in the meantime, they have asked that all noncompliant communities complete an action plan. The action plan that is asked to be completed, the deadline for that is this Thursday, February 13th. So we are in a situation where we have an open comment period ongoing and we are being asked to complete an action plan. The final deadline for compliance for the MBTA law has been set for this July. So whatever we decide to do, ultimately Milton, in order to follow the law, by July 14th, will need to have compliant zoning. So this is step one, is creating this action plan or filling out the action plan that we will send in. Or today, actually, what I'd like for our Planning Board to do is to have a recommendation that we send to the Select Board. The Select Board is meeting tomorrow and they can either choose to adopt our action plan or make their changes and submit the action plan as they so choose. Ultimately, they will make that decision. So for today, I'd like to sort of start looking at, with the draft of the action plan, we've had a couple of different approaches to this. Unfortunately, Cheryl had a conflict and could not be here with us. But she did submit her comments and a draft action plan. And I thought with respect to Cheryl, I would want to go through everything that she's put in for consideration in what we would submit as our final draft. Cheyenne, would you be able to pull that up? That would be great. And we can sort of walk through that. And we'll hold our comments until we, and then we'll go through our other draft. And then we can talk about what we would like to ultimately put in. Thank you, Cheyenne. Great. Okay. So Section 1, for those of you who are following, this is what the action plan looks like. Section 1 is the identification. And if you scroll down just a little bit, it gives you a category. Is it possible to scroll a little bit down on the?
Is it scrolling?
Does it scroll down on the actual action plan itself?
Yeah, I'm scrolling, but I'm not sure if it's filling up on your end.
Okay.
Let's see. Try this again.
Okay. Right, yeah. Yes, now it's moving. So we just need to go back up to the top, if you can? Yep, okay. So this is the first section that we are looking at. And this section of the action plan helps to identify the transit stations that determined each community's category. The MBTA Community Categories and Requirements sheet lists each municipality's community category, minimum multifamily, unicapacity, and other requirements. So in filling this out, obviously, our community, we all agree, is Milton. Cheryl has selected the community category that we respond to is the Rapid Transit Community. In 1.2, 1.3, that unit capacity requirement would carry a unit count of 2,461. 1.4 asks, does this municipality have any MBTA rapid transit stations within its boundaries? So that is stating, she has stated Milton, Central Ave, Valley Road, Cape and Street, all Matapan Trolley Line. 1.5, does this municipality have any MBTA commuter rail stations within its boundaries? No, that's something that everyone does agree on. 1.6, does this municipality have any other MBTA transit stations that are located outside of its municipal boundaries? That they may have developable station areas within them? So that question, she has answered yes. And that would be the Matapan, the Cedar Grove, Blue Hill Ave, Fairmont, and Reedville commuter line. Okay. So filling out the person, she did not, that was left blank. Best of your knowledge, does this municipality have any existing zoning districts that allow multifamily housing as a right, at least 15 units per acre, as measured in gross density? And no is the answer to that, she has. And then 2.2, does this municipality have any established housing-related goals or strategies from municipal planning documents, such as a housing production plan, master plan, or economic development plan? And this was great. There were a lot of things that were items that were filled in, things that the town has been working on. And then 2.3, what is the future of things that we're looking at? So I thought this was a good, helpful section. 2.4, has this municipality's legislative ever voted on whether to adopt a zoning district intended to comply with Section 3A? Yes, town meeting did vote to adopt a zoning district. 2.5, has this municipality received state funding or consulted assistance from Mass MHP for technical assistance to support compliance with Section 3A? Answered yes. So preliminary zoning strategies. These were, she has a new 40R or other overlay zoning districts, because we're looking at that right now with East Milton Square. We've also done the Milton Village and Central Ave. And then some items that were listed. What non-housing characteristics are important for this community to consider in its 3A zoning district? Preserving historic character and historic buildings, mixed-use development slash preserving existing business districts, affordability, walkability, pedestrian and bicycle connections to transit, open space preservation, distribution of sub-districts and zone capacity beyond half-mile of trolley and commuter rail stations, municipal services, and congestion. Which were all, I think, things that we had talked about and were in agreement on our other draft. Action Plan Timeline, okay, short answer, yep. Public Reach, ongoing. These are items that, yes, public outreach is ongoing. Consultant Engaged, that's ongoing. Alternative Districts, sort of a timeframe, complete in March. Compliant Model Testing, ongoing. Develop Zoning finalized late April, early May. Planning Board Hearing, ongoing May. Public Hearing, May, early June. Okay. So I think that is just, and then the final would be anything else language that we would want to add at that time, any comments. So, and then a signature by the Town Administrator. So, for submission. So now, if we could go over to the draft that we had started working, Cheyenne, if we can, can we keep that, just so we can reference that back and forth? Is that possible to do? If we need to?
Can you see both of them?
Um, yes, now we can see.
It should be a split screen on the share.
Oh, wait. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Can others see? I'm just still seeing Cheryl's comments.
Let's try this again. Okay. You see the split screen?
Um, I'm seeing, it's just an email and then, yeah.
It's hard with like three screens. I don't know which screen is actually.
If you want to just pull up, you want to take, we can take off, take Cheryl's down for a minute and then put up the draft. That might be a little easier.
Okay. Do you see the draft? Okay, cool.
Yes, okay, great. All right, so we have 1.1, Milton. 1.2, we have to see appendix. We don't, we're not claiming to have a specific category at this time. 1.3, we don't have a unit count specifically at this point either. Does the municipality have any MBTA rapid transit within its boundaries? Our draft had said, no, we did not agree that we do. Does this municipality have any MBTA commuter stations within its boundaries? No, on that. Does this municipality have any other MBTA transit stations that are located outside of its municipal boundaries that may have developable station area within them? We had said yes to that. And please describe the MBTA transit stations that are located outside of this municipal boundaries but might have developable area within them. And those would be the Blue Hill Ave, Fairmont, and Reedville. Because those are within the half-mile radius. Please provide the person filling out this form. We had, I think you would put, Jim had offered to put his name down, but I think we should, and we can talk about this, but that would be the Planning Board at 1.7. Please provide the name of the Municipal CEO, Nick Milano. Please briefly describe other members of the core team developing the multifamily zoning district. Again, that would be Planning Department Staff, Planning Board Members, private consultants. Overview History. Best of your ability, does this have any zoning districts that allow multifamily? Nope, so we were the same with Cheryl on that. Does this municipality have any established housing-related goals or strategies from municipal planning documents, such as the Housing Production Plan? Master Plan, we said yes. I thought the language that Cheryl had provided with more specific action plans would be helpful maybe at this section. Please briefly describe any relevant strategies, goals, objectives of the work that has been done to date. That's again, for that section. And what we're working on. Has this municipality's legislature ever voted? Yes. Has this municipality received state funding? Yes. Preliminary zoning strategies. Other zoning strategies. I think we had put that down, but I think we could agree with what Cheryl wrote, a 40R overlay zoning district on that. And then this is sort of where we got down to other non-housekeeping and sort of our list of priorities that would include in some of those items. And then our action plan timeline. Right. So I think that's somewhat consistent with what Cheryl wrote. So can we just, can we scroll back up to the top on this, Cheyenne? Okay. And just, I think, I think the best way to proceed is to go through and go through each section, see if there's things that we want to amend or if what we would like to, or what we would like to change or add at this time. Does that sound good to the other members?
Sounds good, yeah.
Okay. All right. So 1.1, MBTA, named Milton, obviously. Commuter category, 1.2. This, I'll just leave it up to members if we want to change this at this time or if we would like to keep this as we have currently.
I think we should leave it as it is currently. We, as we know, the SJC did not make a decision on this particular matter. So it's open. So I think the appropriate answer is as we have.
I agree.
I agree as well.
So that would make that 1.3 be the same, that we're not, at this time.
Correct, I think.
We're not, yeah. And this is at this time, correct? Right, okay. Does this municipality have any MBTA rapid transit station within its boundaries? Are we making any changes to this?
1.4 should be no.
Okay. These, can remain with that. Does this, is that, is everyone agreeing on that?
Mm-hmm, yes.
All right. Does this municipality have any MBTA commuter rail station within its boundaries? I think we have to keep, that would be no, because we don't, definitely. Does the municipality have any other MBTA stations that are located outside of its municipal boundaries that may have developable station area?
Yes.
Yep, within them. Please list the MBTA state transit stations that are located outside of the municipal boundaries but might have developable stations within them. And that would be half-mile from the Blue Hill Ave, Fairmont, and Reedville stations.
Yep.
Okay. 1.7, do you all agree that we should put the Planning Board in? For 1.7, yeah. That just. So Nick Milano would be the CEO.
We had identified Nick as the Town Administrator, so we've put not only his name, but his title.
Yeah, that's a good idea to add that. Great. Zoning districts. All right, I would agree with that, no. Does everyone else agree as well?
Wait, so actually, if you go up to 1.9, where it says Planning Department Staff, Planning Board, should we write like state consultants?
I think would that fall under private consultants like UTEL?
MAPC, maybe mention them.
Well, this is with the multifamily zoning. We've been working with MAPC. But it's probably, really, our only, for multifamily zoning has been, UTEL has been our.
Approved. I don't know, maybe that's.
I'm sorry, I just, you broke up, Maggie, what did you say?
Just about state-approved. It's a state, didn't we, they didn't, we got funding from the state. Aren't they state consultants?
Well, I think they're private sector, right? I mean, they're.
Yeah, I think that was, I think that was directly through EOHLC. Because we had to run our draft zoning through our preliminary when we were first working on it. And the Select Board was working on it, they had to send a draft and it had to be approved by EOHLC. So would you want to include? I think UTEL Architecture is probably.
I can do a request one, I'm not.
I think it's fine as is.
Removing a MAPC, yeah, perfect, okay. Housing Overview, to the best of your knowledge, does this municipality have any existing zoning districts that allow multifamily housing, 15 units per acre, measured in gross density? Nope, we don't. Do we agree on 2.1? Okay.
Yep.
2.2, any established housing-related goals or strategies from municipal planning departments, such as a housing production plan, master plan, and economic development plan? Yes. And then 2.2 has those relevant strategies? I think we should take, I like what Cheryl put down in this category.
Agreed. Her wording was great.
Cheyenne, would you be able to? Yep. Great.
So the only thing about the town farm, that is not a municipality. The town farm is owned by a different trust. So I don't know if that is an accurate statement. Says, does this municipality? The town of Milton doesn't own the land at the town farm.
Okay, we could hold off on that one.
Strike that line.
And if we, and if we do end up, if the trustees do end up doing that, we could certainly add that in the future to work that we've done on this, on zoning. Municipality currently working on other planning for housing? Yes. And then I think we should bring over, I think, the East Milton, the language on 2.3A. The language that, yeah, perfect. Or actually, that would go under 2.3, sorry, that's. Legislative, 2.4, yes, that, it has, yes, that has. And I think we would want to check C on this as we are doing overlay zoning in East Milton right now. I think we don't need other, yeah. So describe potential. I think this is where, under 3.1, attach any supporting documents that show planning work the community has already done for this district. I think Cheryl had put in MAPC, working with MAPC consultant, something along that language. Can we check to see what?
On hers, it just goes from 3.1 to 3.2. So there's no language for 3.1 CRD. But we can, we can add that.
Yeah, we can add MAPC consultant, drafting zoning, and design guidelines currently. Yeah. All right, non-housing characteristics. Some of these overlap with what Cheryl had written. Mixed use development.
You guys, my, some language. You guys, my, um, some language for 3.2 this morning, so I'm sorry for the delay. And I wanted four things to be added under non-housing characteristics, which are important, that I think we have all heard from residents. Um, not just in the, this MBTA zoning, but for years and years we've been hearing about it. So the four things that I think are, um, a concern, um, to residents is one, the healthcare capacity, which I already talked about, and the, um, the health department has already sent out a letter, so we could attach the letter. The other thing is the wildfire danger, um, that I talked about before. Also, um, for many years, we've heard about the impact about, um, airplanes, and airplane noise on the community. And, uh, more recently with my work on the Climate Action Committee, we've been talking about, um, greenhouse, uh, greenhouse gas inventory. And, um, and how it's increased, uh, from 2017 to 2022, we've had an increase in our greenhouse gases. And so my concern is that we don't have a plan to help offset the increase, um, in greenhouse gases, um, um, especially when we have another state mandate, um, to, um, come up with a plan to, to help address and, um, the, the Massachusetts Clean Energy and Climate Plan for 2050. So I put, I sent you guys the language, um, for the four things that I'm concerned about, and also why I'm concerned about it. I know it could be a little bit lengthy, so if you think my narrative is not entirely needed, you know, feel free to strike any language, but I just wanted to let you know where, what my perspective was and where I was coming from and the concerns that I'm hearing about.
Great.
When did you send that, Maggie?
Just this morning. It came from Cheyenne.
Yep. So one of those items we had listed in here, and maybe we can consolidate, maybe make this little language a little bit more concise. What might be helpful is, Cheyenne, could you cut and paste what Cheryl had and put that in above this, so we can sort of look at all, all the language together?
Yes.
That would be great. Cause I think maybe the first two items that we had on our draft are, we can say it in one line.
And we, um, Maggie's, I've read what Maggie wrote, and I think it's, I think it's appropriate to include. Could we, uh, include Maggie's individual, uh, topics, so for example, healthcare capacity, um, wildfire danger, aircraft exposure, and then write C attachment. So we could have the entire language that Maggie wrote, you know, as an attachment. But not put all of the narrative in there, or we could put all of the narrative in there.
I did the, I, I did think, you know, putting all the narrative, but I, I, I think maybe bullet points for this document, I think those are good supporting, um, discussion arguments in the future. Um, one of the comments I just was concerned, alludes to the, with, when we talk about healthcare capacity, is language that I think we want to avoid saying, we're not going to do anything, you know? And I, I think one of them around the healthcare, that we're concerned about the impact of this, but we're not saying we're not gonna, we're not gonna create a non, we're not gonna be non-compliant because of that. We're, we're not going to not creating a zoning district. So maybe if we bullet, just sort of hurt those as being priorities, but just not put. Yeah.
Just to clarify, it doesn't say anywhere that we're not going to be non-compliant, it just says it's a concern.
And what I said, it says that there should be no, no expansion of housing until this is absolutely no. I mean, if we took that out and we could, but I just, I, I just don't want to emphasize one thing over the other. So I thought being consistent.
Oh yeah, before any expansion, yeah. Or it could be just, um, must be addressed. Period. And leave out by the governor before any expansion.
So we're putting the full language in it?
Well, what, what do others think? Um, cause we still have, we want to mention, maybe we have the mixed use development. So let's, so Cheryl addresses the mixed use development preserving existing businesses. So I think in our draft, the first two lines, we could, we could, we could, that's covered there. We do want to talk about create an affordable, an affordable housing supply of more than 10% of new units. I think we would want to carry that over. And then I think the question is, and then adding Maggie's things. We, how we want to word, you know, particularly the healthcare capacity.
In one word, uh, and, and right, in that create an affordable housing supply of greater than 10%, rather than more than.
Yes.
Small, small, grammatical, grammatical change.
But do you, do you all agree that we should take, because we've said above mixed use development preserving existing business districts, that we could take out our, those top two?
Yes.
Oh no, keep that Cheyenne, sorry. It's down in the other, like the red, red lined, yeah, perfect. Can delete that. And then we would want to include the, yeah, create affordable housing supply of greater than 10% of new units. Period. The, or not period, I, I guess we're being, we're not using periods there. The impact of any new units. I mean, I guess how, how lengthy do we, what do we want to put here?
I think that's fine.
We have, well, we have healthcare capacity up top as a bullet point. It just seems like we're being more consistent if we.
Yeah, I, I think if we have it written above, or as we have it written above, we, we don't need the lengthy explanation in red. You know, I, to your, to your point, if we're going to be consistent with short expressions, then
That's what I'm thinking, just keeping it sort of simple and clear, and these are, these are the characteristics.
Right. They didn't ask for an explanation, they asked for the characteristics.
Right, that would.
Meredith, we, we don't address yet anywhere um, what I think could be stated as the sufficiency of town services. And this might be the only place where we can state that.
So we have listed municipal services, but we could expand. And maybe that's, we include municipal services to include wildfire, fire danger, police.
Well, I guess municipal services, category.
Right. Schools, you know, we've talked about a lot.
Schools, fire, police, DPW, infrastructure, should all fall under that category.
Would we ever say that it's, this is an unfunded mandate?
Well, it, it is, I mean, I think, um, some might remember, an outline I presented to the select board quite a long time ago, that, um, the math is, uh, is gonna create a substantial burden for the town and for the taxpayers. So.
I remember that, and I think it was something like it would cost the town like $10 million per year or something like that.
Yeah, that's true, that was the magnitude, and, you know, uh, that we, 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 following that, we had some analysis by RKG, which, uh, I happen to not agree with. But, um, you know, there's a, there's a financial component to this that isn't stated yet within the non-housing characteristics.
So should we say municipal services including fire, including police, fire, schools, police, come on fire, schools, and DPW?
So.
Yeah, I mean, we can include it, I don't necessarily think the state really cares about that. Um, I think it's more, um, and again, as I said, I'm not a lawyer, but I, my recollection is hearing, um, that, um, you know, states can't pass laws that are unfunded mandates. We're a Prop 2 and a half state. You know, we're hearing about all the, um, the needs now and the expenses on the school side, and I understand that the school side is different. That's a completely different, um, budget, and so I don't want to get caught up in that necessarily, I'm focused on the town side. Um, but, um, I think, you know, Prop 2 and a half is, uh, limiting, and this whole initiative is an unfunded mandate, which I don't know if that's ever been resolved or not. So I think we should put it in here, but I also think they really don't care. And every town municipal services are gonna be impacted.
All right, so the question is, by, um, we have healthcare capacity, which I do like as a separate bullet point, because I think that's a regional, um, but it's, but it's critical, and Milton is being affected by it. So maybe keeping that separate, but maybe the wildfire danger, would, Maggie, do you see that as falling under fire?
Um, yep, but I would
We could take that out, maybe?
Or highlight under, in parentheses, after fire. I mean, just with everything that's going on in California, and I know some people think I could be a little bit crazy. But, um, 50 acres burnt in the Blue Hills last year. And, you know, 20, as I said before, Milton has, um, 2,000 acres of and I think it's a very real danger. And we're short-staffed, our fires, fire department is short-staffed by six men every single shift.
And we are expanding, I mean, Walcott Woods is built right up to the back of the Blue Hills. That's in the Blue Hills. So it's a valid argument.
Okay. So that's a good place, all right, we'll take that out, we'll keep healthcare capacity. That would be a line item, aircraft exposure.
Should that say aircraft noise exposure? Or exposure to aircraft noise? I mean, Cindy Christensen sent us a great email on an FAA rule that's trying to discourage development in, um, in, um, you know, highly trafficked airplane patterns. And it's sort of in direct conflict with the MBTACA mandate. More emphasis on that one.
Noise, the noise exposure, I think that's, yeah.
But I also don't think it's limited to noise, noise is one of them, but what all the particulates that the airplanes drop, I mean, you can talk to residents in town who have to pressure wash the side of their houses and their decks because there's like, you know, a black greasy film on it, so it's not just noise, there are other, other things too, so.
All right, so keep it, let's, then let's keep it, air, aircraft exposure.
Could be noise and
Yeah, I'm reading this right now, trying. Let's see, future aircraft, aircraft noise complaints that will impact airport operation, aviation safety. Yeah, I remember doing a job in Winthrop, downwind of the landing runway, and all I could smell was burnt rubber from when the tires hit the tarmac. It was amazing. Just constant. Anyway.
All right. So I think then we can take out, um, or we want to add, we want to keep in, um, the, that create the affordable housing, um, supply greater than 10% of new units. Add that.
I mean, I think that's a priority to us. I mean, can we say greater than 15%?
I think greater than 10%, and then once we do the economic development plan, we can, we can ask for it, we can request it to be 15%. That's something that HLC will also have to approve in our, our final zoning. And then I think we can take out that last sentence, Cheyenne? Action plan, okay, um. See appendix, um. Do we want to put, um, see appendix under this, under finish? And then we would add that language below. I don't mind putting in, um, some of these dates, we've been obviously working public outreach and forum, we could say on, ongoing. We started in 2023 to present, yeah. Compliance model. I'm going through that, yep.
I mean, I don't think this timeline is unreasonable, I'd just want to
Yeah, I don't either, because I think it certainly is our intention to be, have meet the July 14th deadline.
So where it, where it says special town meeting, date to be determined, should we put before July 14th? You know, hinting to the fact that we want to be in compliance and be done with this, when we have to be?
Yeah, um. I, I think we have to keep that date to be determined, because it's hard to say specifically, but it will have to be in June.
Okay.
Okay, then. The signatures, that would be, um, yeah, attach appendix. So where would we put the language we had talked about at our last meeting? Um, I think there's an area a little down below, Cheyenne? Or is that it?
That's it.
Okay. So yeah, so I guess we would have to put, the language that, um, was the appendix language, um, that, and I asked you to send it to the select board just for their consideration, I didn't know, um, that we had discussed. Do you have that, Cheyenne, or do you want me to send that to you? Sort of, and we can just look at it up here, I'm not saying we should.
Let me check my email really quick.
All right.
Um, was it the ones in January 28?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, I've got it.
And it was, yeah, scroll, if you scroll down. It was that language.
You want me to copy all this and put that in there?
Yeah, if you could, and then we'll, then we'll look at it and pull it up on the, the screen. And we would. Do you want me to just send you the ta- I think I had sent the Friday, just the text would be helpful to you.
Uh, sure.
So Meredith, the one I'm looking at is January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five? And the one that we're on now is the twenty-eighth?
Yeah, this was, um, I think I had sent actually something different to Cheyenne. I'm just pulling it up right now.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm doing this on my phone. Okay, prob- There was actually one that was, it was even later. It was, um, February fifth, that's all. Sorry, it's taking me a minute here. Or do you, do you have a gem in front of you? I'm up, trying to. Oh, you found it.
Yeah, I have.
Yeah, I have to search a lot.
On Dory project, you know?
Was it? That.
Uh, February fifth, want me to forward this to Cheyenne?
Yeah, is that what you're trying to add? Is that this, that might be?
I just have the language that you sent me from Friday. It just says appendix part one.
Yes, all right. Pull that up. And Jim, if there's anything else that
Yeah.
you know, noted that should be added, but that's, yeah.
Well, if you're pulling from the January thirty-first memo, I think it would be the same.
Yeah, that's even later.
And I just sent that to Cheyenne, not to confuse things further.
Thank you.
Okay, we can just read through this.
So we don't, I don't think we really need where it says part one summary, do we? Because we're only.
No, yeah, we don't need that.
Yeah, there's like an appendix and then a full appendix. I'm sorry, appendix and part two is full text.
So Meredith, you might just want to summarize it.
I was gonna say, it, just to be helpful. So this essentially, um, captures the essence of that we, that Milton has been put into a very awkward, it's an awkward situation because we are being asked to complete an action plan when the comment period is still open. And we, to put it really simply, we, we don't know what the final regulations are going to be. So to ask us to commit to something is premature to actually understanding, um, and having an opportunity really for the town to comment. Because what would be the, what would be the purpose of allowing a community to comment on proposed regulations? And, and to, you know, if, if the planning board went ahead and took action without waiting to hear what the community's input was. I, I think it's just, um, I think it was not well thought out, um, and um, and it seems to be intentional that H L C just would like compliance and, and to really ignore any of the comments, um, that will, that will be, that will be submitted. So this just states our reason that we're not, um, there's no intention to not be compliant, but that, um, compliance in this, in this process, um, would not be prudent, uh, for the town of Milton. Um.
Right, and it explains why, why we decided not to fill out the, um, fill in the little bubbles as they asked.
Right.
You know?
So this part two would not be included, um, Cheyenne. So I think we just would take this out. Um, but there was language also that.
I'm sorry, you sure you don't want to, because Tom had referenced, um, appendix, then appendix. Two, two separate appendixes. We don't want to work through them both, huh?
Well, I was gonna, well, I was gonna propose that we include the language that was sent out today.
Uh huh.
That, um, was shared. I don't know if you pulled that up.
Yeah, the one about the timing.
Yeah.
Yeah, let me copy and paste that. Um, I'll just put it right here.
I just wanted to look this over. I think there was something above the, um, before this, Cheyenne?
Um, I just have, it just says Meredith, here's the full text, and then it goes into this.
So isn't this sort of just a summary of the larger text, the bold?
Right.
So do we?
Do we want to?
We needed, I mean, I, I like how Meredith, you put that, um, that a request saying to extend the action plan deadline until thirty days after.
Mm hmm.
That.
That we could maybe add that.
That should be added, but I think this is sort of a, and I'm not saying it just seems to be a summary of what was already stated. And maybe that's okay to put in a summary, but.
That you're saying, it may be repetitive that what we had put in earlier.
Unless I'm misunderstanding.
No, I'm, I just see what you're saying.
So it wouldn't be a part two?
Mm hmm.
Do you want to take the whole thing out or just leave like a little bit?
Hold on, let me.
I mean, so there's one.
Leave out, I, I would leave out the note, the bottom note.
And, and maybe just, um, uh, get rid of the red where it says attach appendix, get rid of that.
Yeah.
Then you could say something like
I even think with the first sentence, we could take it, take that out because we've, we've sort of said that in what was above. And then have our final paragraph be to redress E O H L C's improper deadline, which requires the action plan responses before that we would include that.
You want that after all of this?
Wait, no, go, go back. Do you mind? Go back?
All right, yeah. To redress, yeah, we would want that.
Keep that.
And then this down here.
Yeah, so on that first line where it says improper action plan, timing and proposed redress, get rid of that. And then, you know, where it says to redress, do you say something like in summary, we would, we, we request E O H L C to
Well, no, we wouldn't say request, yeah. Oh, oh, take out to redress, okay. No, I think we would put the request down where, um, E O H L C, um, we request that E O H L C extend the action plan deadline?
Yeah, redress, we request E H L C to redress.
To redress, okay. What do we think of this following section? Is there another way we would want to word E O H L C?
I mean, I like a strong statement that says E O H L C must extend. I mean, uh, is, but is that too strong? Are we playing nice?
For publication that is officer representative. I'm, I'm fine with that, but I, how do others?
I think I, I, I'll, I'll offer
Yes.
like change in expression. Um, instead of must, uh, maybe we consider writing should responsibly extend?
Mm hmm. That's good.
Maggie, would you be okay with that as opposed to must?
Yeah, no, that's good.
Okay. So I think that, adding that language in, um, it, it says, you know, it, I think it's pretty straightforward, um, you know, the, the process of, of having to write an, an action plan before the regulations have been properly promulgated seems to um, be dismissive of what the S J C required. That, 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 that these regulations, um, they were clearly found to be uh, not, not legally promulgated, um, and that they need to be done, you know? It needs to be done so, um.
Yeah, that's our problem. There was a process that just has not been followed. And that's, that's our frustration.
Yeah, it definitely.
For a challenge. Yeah, sorry, Jim, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I mean, the, the way I read the S J C's ruling is that you have to go back, get input, have open conversations, whether it's individual town forums or one large one in an auditorium somewhere, um, and the emergency declaration just completely blows that off and there's no input. And I do not think that was the spirit of the S J C's ruling. That's why I'm having such a hard time with this. And I think what we're doing here is hopefully going to, to spur a conversation or we'll, we'll get some feedback because right now, we're, we're getting nothing. We're just getting stonewalled. And the S J C is getting stonewalled, which I find is, is I don't understand how that happens, but it's like happening right before us. So now we're at least doing something to get the H L C to, to respond. It's a shame we have to go to this length to do that, but I mean, I think this is great. I think what we're doing is, is fantastic, so.
Yeah, so one, one, you know, one thing that was discussed a lot at both the, um, in, in front of the S J C and then also in their decision was the small business impact analysis. So, um, you know, that was talked a lot. There was a group of, you know, twenty-five businesses who submitted an amicus brief. And they really are looking for, um, the state to do an impact analysis. And that hasn't been done. And, you know, maybe I'm a little biased. I'm a small business owner. And, uh, nobody has reached out to me. I haven't gotten a call from H L C at all to say, what are your thoughts on this? How is this going to affect your business? Um, so I, 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 I'm I'm kind of surprised that H L C is going forward without doing a bare minimum. There was, there's no effort was put forth to do a small business impact analysis. And to me, that's really disheartening because this country is built on small businesses.
Mm hmm.
I mean, I wonder if we should be requesting a meeting of H L C? Or.
Um, I think there is a meeting being requested, so.
Okay.
I don't know details, but I think there is. Okay. So I, I think, um, can we just scroll back up, Cheyenne, and just sort of look over what?
So basically in one point two, one point three, where it says see appendix, we should title what we just wrote as appendix, so they know this is our response, right?
And and that will be the part two full text with our paragraph at the end?
Yes.
Okay, it's important that we get the whole part two in there. You know, Tom Doris' full summary.
So this bold is going to be appendix for one point two or one point two and one point three?
One point two, one point three. And then I think it might be section four and five also. Right, it will be the same.
We would want to.
Go around, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, we want to take out that red, see.
Just say see.
We just say see appendix, right?
All right, see appendix.
Okay, so I think. All right, scrolling through any other things that.
That yellow, we don't need to all highlighted.
You don't want to highlight it?
I know. Well, why is it, oh, instead of circling or red?
Yeah, yeah, the box.
Cheryl also had D. Did you want D as well?
I'm, I'm sorry?
Cheryl also had D. Yeah.
Oh, yes. Cause we are looking at a new bit. Yeah, we are looking at.
And we're not going to do E? Other zoning strategy, just to keep our options open? I mean, do we have to define our other zoning strategy? Or I just figured we'd check that box? In case there is one.
I think you'll have to, well, do you have to say what your other thing is? Because when you pop it up on the, the webpage, it pops up these other options when you click like C and D and E. So we might have to fill it out if we click it.
Oh, gotcha. All right.
Oh, and I'm sorry. You know what? I'm looking at 31. Please describe potential district locations. Optional. Attach any supporting documents that show. So the MAPC work that we're doing is not necessarily for our compliance. Although it's one of the districts that we're looking at. Had Cheryl put anything in this on 31C?
No.
Yeah.
Probably because she did in the PDF.
Cause we have so many, we have multiple districts. I, maybe we just leave this blank at this point too. The, where the MAPC consultant is currently drafting zoning. That's, that's really separate from our compliance. Up, up in 31C.
So you're saying take that right out?
I think we should take that out and leave that blank. In 3.2. Is that a star underneath 3.2? Is that ours?
I think it's just from the webpage to show that it's required.
All right. So anything else that did not go in here? We do have the 21st that we can, we can write additional comments. I think Nick, Cheyenne, is, is Nick writing comments on behalf of the town as well? Or Peter?
It wasn't talked about yet.
Okay. Not yet. Something maybe. Okay. So, but we could also, if there's any additional items, Thursday is the deadline, but we could certainly submit additional information if we wanted for the, for the common.
Yeah. Thursday is the deadline for the action plan.
Right.
First is the deadline for our comments on
Correct.
Regulations. So they're kind of two separate things.
Right.
You think the town should put forth comments for the 21st?
Yes.
So that's separate. That's a separate.
Yeah, that's separate from this. So it's, this is just simply the action plan. Yeah.
Yeah. But I still think you need to title this appendix because when you're telling we see appendix.
Yes. Yeah.
And, and guys, why aren't we including both appendixes again? The part one and the part two? I think Tom really wants those both in there. Did we feel that it was too long or something or? I mean, I think we want to be.
I was trying to consolidate. Do you want to pull? We can pull up appendix two and.
Yeah.
Well, just that, yeah, that January 31st letter has an appendix, part one summary, and then part two, it says full, full text. I think the intent, take both of those in there. So when you.
Even if it isn't on, on this, when you pull up the actual action plan, we can just attach the PDF. So it doesn't like fill up everything.
Okay.
I was just trying to limit. Yeah.
That's okay. As long as we're sure that when the HLC gets this, they're both in there. That's important to me.
Yeah. But I think our whole thing with this, Jim, is why aren't we, we, it's pretty clear and simple that we are, we're, we're struggling with with the process. Their process is incorrect. So like this is the whole thing. We don't, we're struggling filling out the action plan because the process is wrong. So we want.
Yeah, I, I'm trying to keep it simpler and then we can add more, expand it with our comments.
Okay. Okay.
I think this is a little more succinct and and explains why we are proceeding the way we are.
Okay.
Okay. So I think now, I, I think what we need to determine is I, I obviously this, if our board agrees on this, that I would want to have a vote that we present this to the select board as our, as the action plan requested by the planning board. And that they adopt our action plan and sign off of on it and submit to EO HLC. Obviously they have the right to submit what they want. But I think this is the essence of of the, at this point, of what our, our town is able to commit to and our planning board. I think it's a, you cannot commit to something that you don't have a final roadmap on, on what this ultimately could be.
I, I agree with that, Meredith. Yeah. And, you know, and furthermore, and I know the select board has the responsibility as the executive board of defending the town. And I sincerely feel we're defending the future of the town of Milton by, you know, expecting and hoping for an appropriate conclusion of this. And I, I will say, you know, we've, I know there's been some discussions in regard to the cost, and I think I have plenty of emails like you do from residents talking about the cost of legal representation. I think what isn't being said is what is the cost of not utilizing legal representation? And also what is the cost of not utilizing the best legal representation? My opinion is we, we chose a firm to pursue this. And I think it's a mistake if we don't utilize the firm that we started with. Success in legal matters often has an awful lot to do with the continuity of the legal representation. And if we take the argument that was initiated by one firm and pass it off to another firm and expect that we can have a successful outcome, I think we're making a significant mistake. And we're probably not recognizing the cost and the impact to the future town of Milton. And making the decision on what might appear to be significant dollars, but in the future will be very, very a very, very small amount. So.
Thank you.
I do think that we need some type of legal determination. And I, I, you know, you look at it sort of as, you know, maybe we're in the third quarter of the Super Bowl and what are you going to do? Go home? You know, you have to continue on a path. And I hope that the selectmen recognizes this path that we need to continue on it. And it goes back to a request that I made, you know, a year and a half ago to you guys about, I think it could be beneficial for the planning board to get our own attorney and legal representation. I know that's not a discussion for today, but I think that that is a discussion that should be had at some point.
Yeah.
Well, I think the question just really surrounds the clarification and absolute clarification of our status as having a subway in Milton, which we've been talking about for a long time. And unfortunately, I think if we had filed for a declaratory, declaratory judgment in the very beginning, this would have been resolved. But it was, it was not determined. But we don't want to, this is just for the action plan discussion. And Cheyenne, my only other question is you have, we're in this section, the sort of the diamond little sort of a bullet, bulging. Can we get rid of that consistent?
It's just like a formatting suggestion. Yeah.
Okay. All right. Great. I just didn't know if that would, I just want to make sure that that, okay.
Thing is, do you think you could put my things at the beginning of the, my issues of concern at the beginning?
Beginning of the appendix or the beginning of the section?
Beginning of the section. So where it says like healthcare capacity aircraft. You know, those first four things, even, even the. I think is where. And should we under next to healthcare capacity, can we say see attached letter? Cause I would be, because our Board of Health did actually write a letter to five different state entities. I think we should actually include that in this.
I'm fine with that. Just include that letter.
Thank you.
If, if others are as well.
Meredith, it, it sounds like you need a vote on this. If you need a motion, will you be able to outline the motion? So one of us can move it along?
Yes, I would say the motion that I would ask to entertain would be to adopt this as the planning board's action plan and refer it to the select board for a submittal.
Yeah. So moved.
So moved. Yeah. Yeah.
All right. Thank you. And Cheyenne, it, well, let's finish, we'll finish the vote first and discuss. Any discussion by anyone else? Okay. Roll call. Maggie?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So Sean, would you be able to forward this to Nick?
Well, first off, you should make, maybe just make sure everything spelled correctly.
Yeah. And just we'll proofread this. Yeah. You can just run through and, and if you want to send it out to all of us.
Be know like it's in correctly spelled.
Right.
And I'm not sure, like under 1.2 community care, do we say none or do we just say see appendix? I mean, there was little formatting things that I don't know.
Yeah, I'd like to look at just a final draft of it to make sure.
Yeah. Um, because I am, I'm thinking about that append, the second part of the appendix on whether we do want to include include that language as well.
I think you want the whole thing in there. I don't see what it would hurt. Yeah, I just, you know, in this instance, I don't think less is more. I think it's very easy to just add more.
All right. I would entertain that as a friendly amendment. But we'd have to pull up that language. I'm sorry. I'm, cause I'm, I am wanting to make sure we do have everything. Sorry, Cheyenne, if you could.
Nothing.
I mean, I don't think I have an opinion one way or the other. So whatever you guys want is probably fine.
Jim, do you have the most updated version of that?
Yes. So I, Cheyenne, did you get that January 31st?
Yeah.
I want to make sure.
On the screen.
Looking at the same. Yeah.
If you just take that to appendix, part one, and just go all the way to the end of, I think it's page eight. It covers part one summary, and then it dives into the deeper part two full text. I think including all of that leaves no room for doubt.
Do you see it?
That we've, that we've fully addressed the classification issue.
I'm sorry. Do I, are you asking me if I see it?
Yep. No, that's.
Yeah, I have it up.
I'm seeing an action plan with red edits. I'm not seeing.
Let me stop sharing and try it again. Let's see. Okay, it should be.
Yeah, there you go. So that's KJ. Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah. See, can you scroll up to page two?
Actually, page four. So we've included page two.
We've, because we've included the other.
So you're saying appendix one is already included. So part two full text. Yeah, that's it right there. Yeah. You can scroll down to the next page. Yeah, that's it. Nice job.
Then we could just send this to them and then they can attach it at the end.
Send that to who?
Well, when we submit this to the select.
Oh, yeah, sure. Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, let's do that. They can. Yes.
Sounds good.
Is that a? So Jim, so I just would need a motion to amend our.
So I'll make a motion.
To include. Yeah.
I'll make a motion to amend, including the appendix two full text in our document, in our action plan.
Second.
It's your second? All right. Let's do a roll call just on that to conclude. Maggie?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay. That way we, it's, everything's included, so it will be quite clear, but. Okay. So I think that is the only other item on our agenda. So I would thank you, Cheyenne, for forwarding that to Nick to share with the select board. And we should also CC Chair Wells on that as well. And they will be meeting tomorrow evening, correct? Cheyenne, they meet, the select board meets tomorrow? And then they'll be discussing. Yeah, tomorrow night. Which will give the time to submit and meet that deadline of February 13th. So. Okay. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. And just a reminder before we do, that we do have a meeting this Thursday evening at 7:00 PM and it's in the Cronin Room in person.
Do you think the selectmen would ever need to meet with us in executive session at some point to discuss this if they have questions on what we did?
Yeah, I can ask for. Yeah, I could, I could speak to Richard and see if he felt like he needed to meet with us. We wouldn't be able to meet before their meeting tomorrow evening.
Well, yeah. Yeah. It's just that I feel, you know, I, I feel like the, this is something that is, the planning board is tasked with. And I would be gravely disappointed if they chose to go rogue and didn't have any type. they chose to go rogue and didn't um have any type of follow up conversations with us if they choose to go in a different direction.
Mm hmm. Okay. So noted. That's good. Thank you. Okay, with that, um, we can entertain a motion uh to adjourn. And M B T A is on our Thursday agenda as well. So if any other further discussion, we can address it then, too. Okay.
All right, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All right, roll call. All in favor? Sean?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yep.
Maggie, I'm sorry, and and myself, yes. Thank you all. Have a nice afternoon and see you Thursday.
All right, all right. Take care.
Thank you. Bye bye.